Good afternoon. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. This is December 13th. Hey, we're starting a meeting here. First, can I get a motion to go into special session, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Eric.
Motion carries.
We're in session.
It's December.
Apparently, everyone missed the memo. All right, up first, we have an introduction of an ordinance authorizing the sale of property located at 239 North Locust Street, Hagerstown, Maryland.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale of property located at 239 North Locust, Hagerstown, Maryland, to Augustine and Voice for a purchase price of $45,000. The sale will provide the opportunity for new investment and redevelopment at 239 North Locust Street. The sale will be in accordance with all of the terms and conditions outlined in the attached purchase agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a resolution authorizing the sale of property located at 216 South Prospect Street, Hagerstown.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council approval of a resolution authorizing the sale of property located at 216 South Prospect, Hagerstown, Maryland, to Elise and Paul Durnek?
Durnek.
Did I say it right?
Durnek.
For a purchase price of $15,000 pursuant to the ordinance which was effective on September 24th, 2020. The sale will be in accordance with all of the terms and conditions outlined in the attached purchase agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move forward into our work session. Up first today, we have the Dolman Black Heritage Museum presentation. With us today, we have Alicia Parsons-McBean. Thanks for joining us.
Well, thank you for having me. With me today is our board clergy, Reverend Dr. Patricia Wilson, Williams, Wilson Combe, and she's here from Alaska.
Wow.
So she is with us, and she has a handout for you guys. And we have the board secretary with us, Ms. Janice Kelch, and we also have Mr. Paulie, Mr. Paulie Ward with us, who is our latest board member. We're going on almost a year. We do have one for Ms. Burnett, but we see that she's not here. So I will open up by saying thank you all for having us here, and it's always a pleasure coming before you guys, especially today. However, before I get into why I'm here, I want to remind Mr. Alshire and those of you who were here when we borrowed these funds that we had a bit of an agreement. It was a verbal one, it wasn't written, that if we started this process for this project within four years, that you all would forgive the loan. Now, then we had the pandemic that stifled, not, not a whole lot, but a little bit, it stifled our, our progress. But here it is, still within that four years, and we are here to repay you guys the $120,000 that you loaned us to purchase that building, in the hopes that in the future, you will remember that you said if we were starting the process, that you all would forgive this loan, and maybe we could work something out if, if we need to in the future. And there's no problem. I don't believe that we couldn't if there was a problem that would arise in the future. I just wanted to remind you guys of that, because that's who I am. I'm the, I'm the person that doesn't forget. So, who gets this? Okay, well, before I present, I do also want to make this declaration for everyone in the community to hear. It has not always been easy to get this project where it is today. However, we have always had the support of the city. I tell people all the time, because it is my truth, that we wouldn't have that building without former Mayor Bruci, who is now the council member, and the support of, it seemed as though when Mayor, yep, and there's, there's the radiation brain. Okay, when Mayor Keller came on board, it, it was seamless. It was though the support never stopped. So I want to thank all of you for making certain that the, this is going to happen. There's no stopping that this will happen in our community, and we will all be the better for it, but we could not have done this without you guys. So I am here, we are here, to say thank you on top of this. This, in, in the larger, the, the big picture, this is tiny. I mean, you all were there with us when, when we were being discredited within the community. You all were there with us when we celebrated the, the opening of our temporary gallery and everything in between. I have never had any reservations about picking up the phone and calling any of you all with a need for the museum. And yes, we understand that we have to show that we are willing to do the hard work and the heavy lifting, and I thank you guys for seeing the hard work and the heavy lifting that we have done. But again, mister, could not have done this without you. Remember that, okay? And yes, there will be a room dedicated to you all, you know, this administration and all that. And I say that now, but you know. So, you ready? Look at you. Love that dress.
And three.
I'm just going to sneak up close for one for me. Okay, we have smiles.
I got them already. Right over your shoulder.
Paul, they won't mess around.
Here you go, sir. I don't want that responsibility.
Neither do I.
Thank you, guys, and thank you all for being here, the board members. We appreciate you guys joining. All right. Next, we have preliminary agenda review. Stop me if you have any questions. We meet next Tuesday, the 20th, at seven. We'll call the meeting to order, have the invocation, pledge to the flag. Our meeting schedule for January will be January 3rd, no meeting. January 10th, 17th, and 24th, we'll meet at four, and January 31st, we'll meet at seven. We have an appointment to the City Ethics Commission, and we're also adding a special recognition for Sheriff Mullendorf. We'll have our citizen comments section. Approval of the minutes. Our consent agenda for engineering, Wheaton Park improvements, phase one, for $384,342.06. MKS Business Park Stormwater Retract Project for $250,000, and downtown redevelopment of 32 North Potomac Street, $2,450,000. Fire Department turnout gear replacement for $31,080. IT Barracuda Essentials Compliance Edition for $20,494. Planning and Code Administration, a 2023 Ford Ranger for $32,890. Police Department, Forenscope Smart Tablet for $35,058. Public Works Emergency Repair for Unit 16, a trash truck, $15,162.60. And a street closure for Antietam Velo Club Bike Race and 5K. Utilities under light, emergency purchase vehicle repairs, $37,323.24. Norfolk Southern Railway Crossway for $33,820. Substation Power Transformers for $1,021,566. Water, ABB SCADA software contract for 332, 232,949. Wastewater Chemical Purchase for $346,500. Water and wastewater line locating services for $221,500, and a system upgrade for 543.17. Under unfinished business, approval of an ordinance, the purchase of 50-58 West Antietam Street. Approval of an ordinance, amending the city code, add chapter 230, transient housing. Approval of an ordinance, amending the city code, amending chapter 65, habitual offender to enhance support to transient visitors and neighborhoods. Approval of an ordinance, amending the city code, amending chapter 95, excessive use of city services to impose fees for police law enforcement services and code administration services which are over and above the cost of providing normal police protection, law enforcement, and code administration services at transient housing facilities. For new business, we'll have an introduction of an ordinance, conveyance of land at 4953 West Washington Street. Introduction of an ordinance, Hebb Road Property Chartered. Approval of a resolution, lease amendment with the Foundry Pop-Ups. Approval of a resolution, approval of a user agreement with Colt and Palomino League for use of Helane Park Baseball Field. Approval of a user agreement with West End Little League for use of Helane Park Baseball Field. Approval of a user agreement with American Little League for use of the Hager Park Baseball Field. Approval of a user agreement with the Hagerstown Pony League for use of the Funkhauser Park Baseball Field. Approval of a user agreement with Hagerstown BMX for use of a portion of Fairgrounds Park. Approval of field repair agreement with the Hagerstown Fairgrounds Softball Association. Approval of agreement for tree planning at former landfill. Approval of program open space application. Approval of increased purchase order for pool operations. Approval of an automated speed enforcement contract. And approval of a license agreement, trolley photos on cultural trail. We'll have city administrator comments, mayor council comments, and we're adjourned. Any questions? Okay. Next, 2022 Annual Package of Proposed Land Management Code Text Amendments. Steve Bachmiller.
Good afternoon. I have 10 minutes, so I'm going to keep it brief. As brief as I can possibly be, anyway. We do this once a year. Just a really quick refresher, the Land Management Code consists of four consolidated ordinances, the zoning, floodplain management, forest conservation, and subdivision land development ordinances. We gather ideas once a year and present them to you as a package because the process is too cumbersome, expensive, and labor-intensive to have the ordinance in a perpetual state of amendment coming to piecemeal. This year's package, we have 13 proposed amendments. Six of them are, that will lighten or loosen the existing regulations. Three of them are clarifications and corrections, and four of them are ones that are, that will be adjusting or tightening the, some existing regulations to make them more effective. I, given the amount, amount of time, I'm not going to go through them one by one unless you have, unless you want me to, otherwise I'll, I'll just take specific questions on particular proposals. The Planning Commission, due to the holiday schedule being, throwing the boards off, the Planning Commission won't be meeting to make their official recommendation until tomorrow evening. That'll be forwarded to you quickly. We're looking to have a public hearing in late January for this, and if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions? Sorry?
Could you just run through these just real quick, a quick description, just so we get them on the record?
Sure. Okay, the first six are loosening regulations. Proposal number one, permit solar farms in the POM district on properties that have an EPA or MDE remediation plan. These are basically properties that are very difficult to redevelop because of their existing environmental conditions, so this adds a use that isn't, doesn't require people to be there all the time and be exposed to whatever's there. It would not apply to POM properties that do not have one. Number two, adding 13 new permitted uses to the INST district and one new use to the CG and CR. We took another look at the INST, which was adopted two years ago. Yeah, two years ago, to make sure that it was working properly. Also, the comprehensive zoning that you're going to be hearing about in a few minutes as a result of that, but we added 13 new proposed uses that will be permitted in the INST district. Number three, just some really minor adjustments to three standards to wall-mounted signs in the sign section. Number four, permit gambling establishments per Maryland law in the CCMU and CR districts. This would be the downtown area, and then CR is our regional shopping center areas. This is mostly out like Carlin Grove Boulevard, Basil Boulevard, those areas like that, some out dual highway, close to the, basically close to the interstates. Number five is amend the public notice requirements for text amendments to be consistent with Maryland law. Right now, the way our ordinance is currently written, there's actually some stuff written into it that exceeds or is more strict than state law, and we ran into a problem with that in a recent reserving case where some of the procedure wasn't followed per our ordinance, but was still compliant with the state requirements, and it created a scheduling problem for the, and delayed them a month in their process. So what this does is it basically just sets the ordinance up saying compliance with Maryland law. It does allow the, this, the city to pass additional policies that it may want to enforce, but it also clarifies that if for some reason administratively we happen to miss one of those policies, it doesn't make the legally defective per Maryland law. And then, number six is adjustments to the flex building performance standards in the POM district. Basically, it takes the flex building, it makes, it goes from a special exception use to a permitted use, I believe, yes. And then also, in order for it to not have to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals Review Process, it sets four design standards shown on page six of your package. Those are the loosening. The three corrections, number seven, clarifying that the definition of livestock includes beekeeping. This is at the recommendation of the city attorney's office. The ordinance is not defective, but we do get people inquiring, really, bees are livestock? Well, they're kept for their honey. So we are making two very minor adjustments to the definition of livestock, so it makes it abundantly clear, and, and any potential for an appeal, a complete loser, if somebody was to appeal to Board of Zoning Appeals, because right now, it just, it does not specifically say bees. What the bees produce honey does fall into the definition, but they aren't called out individually. Number eight, clarifying accessory structure setback requirements for a principal structure. This is a result of some misunderstanding with the building permit that was issued for an accessory structure up in the, the north part of the city, and we're clarifying that. If you want more detail on that, I'll provide more explanation later. Number nine, minor correction of the conversion overlay section to correct an internal conflict of language. In one place says it has to be more, it can be a one-story building, and in another place it says it has to be a two or more-story building. We're getting rid of the two or more-story reference where it's consistent with the existing, other existing texts of one story. Tightening regulations, we have four proposals for that. Number 10 is relocate and adjust industrial performance standards to apply for all, to all industrial uses, not just districts. As we've revised the zoning ordinance over the last number of years, they've kind of, some of the delineations have blurred a little bit between districts. We've, we're now allowing light manufacturing in certain locations outside of the industrial districts, and the thought was, is that the performance standards for them should be applied just as they would in the industrial districts, if not, they're even more important because they're closer to commercial areas and residential areas. So they take them out of the industrial section, they put them in the supplementaries, and makes them apply to all industrial uses. Number 11, regulation of camper, recreational vehicle and boat parking in residential zoning districts. We received a inquiry about doing something that was completely out of scale with the area that that individual's property was located in, and it caused the Planning Commission to look at this issue, and we crafted some limitations on what you can do as far as that use on a residential property. Number 12, performance standards for raw land in the NMU zoning district to encourage mixing of housing types. You know, we have one large, very large NMU-zoned property out on dual highway. The way it was written, it'd be very flexible, but it also kind of ended up having a, a negative effect in that, in theory, somebody could develop that entire tract, like RH zoning for a large, very large apartment complex, and that was never the intent of that district. So what this does is it requires mixing of uses and mixing of housing types to create more of a village environment rather than a five or 600-unit, multi-unit suburban-style housing development, apartment development. And then, number 13 is regulation of new driveway entrances to public streets from improved residential properties. So that's the summary of it, and if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I have two questions.
Okay.
I'm going to work backwards. The camper ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the way that I read this, so let's just take my house, for example. If I have a camper sitting in my house, what's a pop-up? It's been sitting there since, I don't know, 2007. We use it a couple times a year. I can park 12 vehicles at my house. That's what I can park in my driveway. It's a big gravel driveway, it's not paved. But if I read how this is written, once this is passed, I have to move my camper, right?
I don't know, how large is your camper? How long is it?
Well, it really doesn't matter because it's sitting in a gravel driveway, and if I read this right, it says that it has to sit asphalt, concrete, okay, so, I guess it's a little more than 25 because it has a basket on the front, if you do tongue to, to back. But it's not sitting behind the house, it's not sitting beside the house.
Mm-hmm.
It's sitting in my driveway. It's properly tagged. It's been there for 10 years.
The response we would have to that is, is your property is very atypical of what we find in environments in the city.
Well, most houses along the state roads are atypical to what I would, you know, in other words, if I were in Greenberry Hills right behind me, it would be, you know, it would be of a different nature.
All I can say to that is, we, we can find individual circumstances that it might not fit perfectly into, and I think your property is probably a very good example of that. And I guess would also cause, raise a question of, if, how would you want to treat, and we'll, I think we'll end up asking the Planning Commission this tomorrow night, would you want to do some sort of amortization, not amortization, but, well, actually, yours would be exempt.
Yeah, but once you move it, you're not exempt, right? Once you take it off that property, all right, you've removed that, that, that inconsistent use.
I would say that if you went camping on it and brought it back in two weeks and sat there for the rest of the year, we wouldn't view that as taking it off the property. Ceasing means you were no longer storing it there.
I just, it's hard when you read a proposed ordinance, it has like 12 conditions assigned to it.
Actually...
To apply that to like every lot for that type of, of use.
If I could, the pages 13 and 14 on that, because it's, covers so many areas in zoning ordinance, there's a lot of cross-referencing references or issues. So what you see on the first two pages of it is all, all just redirecting things. The actual limitations are, would be on page 15, that are one, two, three, four, five, six, eight of them, some of which are kind of no-brainers, like you can't camp in it. You can't have people camping in your driveway, that kind of thing.
So is that what the paragraph at the beginning is supposed to, to be addressing?
Yes.
So that the in-laws coming from Oregon don't come and, and set up like, like National Lampoon's Christmas in your, in your front of your house for 30 days and, and, you know, take up residence?
That was one of the, that's one of the things that the Planning Commission thought should be regulated, and also, our Code Enforcement Office does run...
I agree with that.
The first paragraph on page 13 in blue, that is all just instructional, that's actually not specific proposals. The, the specific proposals you'll find in, in red. But basically, what it does, it puts a length and a height limitation on them, requires them to be in rear yards, setback from a property lines, because if you're going to build a 10-by-10 shed, but you've got a 10-by-40 camper that's there 50 out of 52 weeks a year, it should comply with least accessory structure setbacks when it's being stored. Shouldn't be in the front or side yard, especially in our closer-in neighborhoods where you have five or eight-foot, or even less, the property lines, you could have your neighbor having a camper five feet, three feet from your window. Does that help the quality of life of the adjacent property owner? Not used on site for camping purposes, stored on a stable surface so you don't end up with a mud pit underneath of it, that kind of thing. And I have a handout, which I'll pass around to everybody, of examples that we've found around. And again, we received a, an inquiry from a city property owner.
Check.
Who was inquiring to do, doing something. All of these examples that I'm providing here are actually in the, in the county. As, as examples, we'll be doing right now, there's nothing in our ordinance to prevent any of these things that you see in these photographs. And keep in mind, these properties are also a lot larger than is typically found within city limits. So the thought is that there ought to be something in the regular, in the ordinance government. And we had a, one inquiry was on a, our med zone, small, single-family lot, they had a single-car driveway in the front. They wanted to widen their driveway to two cars, which actually made our parking requirements, but they also wanted to park a 33-foot camping trailer that would extend from the front face of their house to the sidewalk in front of their house, and within a few feet of a neighbor's front, front window. So we thought something ought to be adopted.
Thoughts?
Well, I mean, my thought is, I mean, people have stuff. I mean, that guy could say, I'm driving the Precept every day. It's my car. I take it to work every day.
Yeah.
It's properly tagged, it's on his property, it's in his driveway. I'm more offended that you got the truck parked in the grass on the side. I mean, that's right next to my house. I just read this one section, "The vehicle shall not be stored in the front yard or side yard of a dwelling."
One of the reasons, too, is in entertaining this, is to protect people's property interest on visceral properties. There's a lot of people at the house next door that a lot of these were for sale, and they were trying to sell their home. There's a lot of people who would be interested possibly in buying the house and they would see what's going on next door and say, nope, moving on. And it doesn't protect general property values.
I, I think you're right, though, Kristen, people do have stuff. What about, you know, if you want to live in city limits and you have a boat or a camper? I, I don't know, I think this is a slippery slope. I see both sides.
Yeah.
It's, I wouldn't want to see this either, but then...
It doesn't prohibit it, it just places certain parameters on it.
And I don't think it really diminishes the property value necessarily if tempted buyers like to get a house next door. I mean, this doesn't affect the appraisal of the house.
I mean, that dude has $200,000 worth of camper in his front yard.
Mm-hmm.
He's not hurting the, the, the property value of the taxes that he's paying the city.
Then he should...
And I'm sure the income taxes that he pays the city to be there.
The alternative is, if he has the kind of resources for that, he can also pay $100 a month to store it in a storage facility.
But you said this is the county.
Those examples are in the county, yes. They don't apply within the city, but they're comparables, but they're also on properties that are larger typically than we have here in the city as well. So picture that kind of use on a even smaller property, much closer to your neighbor's houses and windows.
That's what I'm saying. I guess for my example, I just use me as an example, and I can tell you that, you know, I'm fortunate, you know, my lot, I can guarantee you is larger than any of these county examples that you're giving. It's just that's where the driveway is. I get the size comparison, you know? Mine's more like the red car, you know, beside these big campers. I just...
Well, as you move forward with it and you take it to a hearing, if down the road after you take public testimony and decide you want to tweak it some, you can always make some adjustments to it before it's officially adopted. But I mean...
Yep, that sounds good.
I think that the issue is the side and front yard because that's where a lot of driveways are. Like, I think you're on the right track as it applies to length of stay, right? Somebody attempting to live out of it for any period of time, right? You don't want those two things, right? You don't want it to be some monstrous thing that looks like a rig.
It can't be in a parking space.
Yeah, you can't be forced, you can't be forced then to, to put your vehicles out on the street. Like, I get those things, but somebody that has like a 16-foot boat, you know what I mean? And it simply is in their driveway, and they're still parking all their cars in their driveway, and the boat's covered and properly tagged, like I... and the boat's covered and properly tagged, like, I guess that's where I kind of, you kind of lose me as it applies to, you know, forcing them to figure out a way to run it around back, if they have that ability. Like, those are the things.
These were crafted to be as uniform and clear as possible. Again, if you want to make adjustments to them after you go to public hearing in order to move forward with it at a level that you feel comfortable with, I mean, you do have that opportunity at that point. But there's just, there's a lot of, if somebody had a house like, like one of these that are on here, I can promise you that there are, if they were selling their house, and let's say there's a pool of a hundred people who might potentially be interested in buying it, there's a noticeable number of that pool, let's say ten people. There's a noticeable number of that pool will see that going on on adjacent property and say, "I'm not even getting out of the car to look at the house."
So you're talking an adjacent property that was for sale, not the property that they're parked on.
Well, I think a pool, I think a pool is a good word to use here in comparison because I can probably find five times as many above-ground pools in this city in backyards that are more abrasive in their condition as it applies to prospective buyers or neighboring properties, you know, being like, eh, it looks a little suspect. You know what I mean? Then, or sheds, you know, in the city. I could probably drive around and, you know, pick out one in the back of every alley that looks like, eh, you know what, I don't want to live in a house next to this property that has this shed that's, you know, in this condition. So do we eliminate pools? Do we eliminate sheds? Like, you know.
There's an end.
Yeah. Which of these atrocities are we, you know, going to look at and say, "No more"?
And the pool in the shed does affect, can affect the value of the property. Completely different than a movable vehicle in a, in a driveway.
Yeah.
It does not affect the value of the property that someone is buying.
So do you want to strike letter E? Do you want to strike the whole thing? Do you want, are you suggesting we take out letter E?
Yeah, I guess for me, I'm saying like, I think we're on the right track as it applies to what you're intending to try and, you know, eliminate from happening. But I just think some of these are beyond the necessity of fixing the issue.
Biggest thing is keeping them out of front yards and not taking up parking.
What if you don't have access?
Then there are plenty of places that you'll rent you space to store.
See, that, that.
That's unfair.
Well, first of all, I don't know if you own a camper, but try calling those places because they are more than full at this point. You can call the tri-state area at this point. And I can tell you, as somebody who owns campers, that it is absolutely difficult to find a space for that. And if everybody had to do that tomorrow, you would probably have a thousand more units than there is space available to find.
Again, keep in mind, the way it's written, anything that's out there now would be grandfathered unless you specifically write an amortization clause in there that requires them to be removed within a certain year or two or three or whatever. But as it's currently written, anything that's out there now is, would be grandfathered. And merely taking it off the property of your camp and would not render it non-compliant. If they started storing it elsewhere, then the non-conformity would go away. But ultimately zoning is mostly intended to protect people from their neighbors.
How do you regulate, like, grandfathering them in without knowing every single camper that's listed in the city? Without like almost registering them?
We wouldn't propose doing that, we just have to deal with it on a case-by-case basis. We operate on a complaint basis.
And we have heard your concerns, and we'll share that with the planning commission because this recommendation has not been forwarded yet. And so they will be discussing it again tomorrow. And then, once they make their recommendation, you have plenty of opportunity to modify it at any way you see fit, if there's still things above that are in here that you and I agree with.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions?
I have one. The section on gambling that states. Here it is. Let me get to it. Here it is. So this is being added, "Gambling establishments as defined, permitted, regulated, and licensed by the state of Maryland, including sports, betting parlors, and similar facilities." I guess my only curiosity is what the term "and similar facilities" means. And I'm going to ask this in the plainest way I can, which is the same question I asked as we headed down this road of putting a stadium in downtown, is that, is my concern, obviously at the end of the day, because I know that there's interest in wanting a sports betting parlor there and everything's transitioning online, and so my curiosity is, does this open the door for the stadium to include a gambling casino facility like there is? It's a Rocky Gap.
If it complies with the state laws, it would be permitted in these two zoning districts. The stadium is in the CCMU zoning district, so as long as it could apply to the state laws, it can go.
So, for me, I'm just going to say I'm opposed to this, simply because I'm opposed to the stadium being converted in any manner to a full gambling casino facility like there exists elsewhere in the state. I'm all for, you know, the offline sports betting or whatever it's called, you know, as an accessory establishment. But I just, I just don't know that, we have no idea, you know, what the impact is going to be of the stadium because it's not there yet. I'm just trying to envision in my mind what the impact would be if that stadium is not just a stadium, but is also a full-scale casino.
Understood.
So, so similar to what they have down in DC where it's just a sports book, it's not a casino, but it would be a sports book.
Right, which is why I don't like the term "and similar facilities."
Yeah, you're more concerned about a full-blown slots, poker.
If you picked up Rocky Gap and put it right downtown, yeah, I would have some concerns.
Got it. Just a.
Just those three words.
Little quick background on that. This has been requested by a owner of a local hotel in the CR zoning district. As we reviewed the issue, it's a permitted use by state law now. We thought we need to put it in the ordinance somewhere. CR makes sense, it's along the highways, it addresses the desire of that individual property owner. But it's also an entertainment use, so we thought, as a land use, it was appropriate to also include it in the CCMU because that's where we're looking to draw tourism and recreational activity.
Will relay those concerns as well?
I just, we struggle with some vices that exist in our downtown. I'm trying to avoid adding to them.
Got it.
Yeah. Any, any other questions or comments, concerns? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, comprehensive zoning.
Hello. Hi, oh, I'm trapped. There we go. Sorry. This is, just like with Steve, we are a day ahead of the planning commission's recommendation. But somehow I realized as I looked at the calendar, we didn't need to do this today because there is time, if we were going to do a presentation to you on the tenth, there would have still been a time to advertise on the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth for a thirty-first hearing. But I think I must have thought the twenty-fourth was the regular meeting in January. But anyway, here we are, and I'd rather get it out of the way. So, tomorrow night, the planning commission will be making their recommendation on the 2022 comprehensive rezoning, which is the second comprehensive rezoning since we adopted the comp plan in 2018. Twenty-twenty is when we did the first comprehensive rezoning to implement the plan's recommendations. We discovered pretty recently that there were eight properties that got left out that really should have been included in the 2020 comprehensive rezoning to receive the new institutional zoning designation. And then two other properties have arisen as planned for museum properties adjacent to institutional zones that also made sense for them to be included in this process. So on the ninth, the planning commission had their public review meeting. No one spoke, no one has said anything the ten days since that meeting. Tomorrow, they'll make their recommendation to you. And assuming that they decide to move forward with that, then we would advertise it twice in January and have the public hearing on the thirty-first. Since this is a geographic thing, even though I know it's got ten minutes, we have the maps up here so you can see which ones we're talking about. So we, we missed Jonathan Hager Elementary School. I don't know how we did, but all the other schools managed to become INST, but we missed Jonathan Hager. We also missed Terracan Park over at Collegiate Acres, which is a public city park. We, the issue number two is the new expansionary plan by the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts at the old Black Oil property. So that would go from Armada to institution. Then we have Wheaton Park at, I don't know how Wheaton Park got left off the list, but Wheaton Park also didn't get rezoned to INST in 2020. So that would come in as well as the Dolman Museum site, which is adjacent. Also Oswald Park and Woodland Way Park didn't make it into the list. We didn't propose to try to capture every tiny, because we have some parks that are, you know, the size of a house lot. We're not talking about those, we're talking about the parks that are more substantial to make sense, and particularly if they're adjacent to other types of institutional uses. And then, in case you missed it, in the last slide, we have it back again on this slide, Oswald Park and Woodland Way Park. And then Rotary Club on Long Meadow Park up on Northern, which is adjacent to an INST, that would go as well. And then the part of Potomac Heights Elementary School that's in the city, that got missed. So that would also go to INST. And Kiwanis Park over there in Light Business Park off of Antina Creek, that, we missed that. So that would go to INST. And that's it, that's what we're proposing.
Questions, comments, concerns? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, request for allocation of ARPA funds. Chris.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So one of the things that staff have been reviewing is the impact of COVID-19 to restaurants across the region in general. Restaurants were one of the largest impacted by the COVID-19 crisis. Many of them were forced to shut their doors. And even more people were forced to delay their plans to open their own restaurant because of everything. As a means to try to respond to that negative economic impact that this has affected to the small businesses and the communities around them, and try to lower the barriers associated with opening a restaurant, we're here to propose reallocating a total of $250,000 of ARPA funding from the negative economic impact and revenue replacement sections to create this program. As a quick overview, a couple of things that this would address is that this would be open for property owners and restaurant operators for restaurant-ready spaces. It would be used for fit-out and purchase of fixtures, furniture, and equipment. It would include currently shelf spaces, those that were previous retail or existing restaurant spaces that need significant core upgrades in order to be able to open back up. We are also looking at this to have a one-on-one match by the applicant with currently no minimums or maximums as part of the application. We would look over the application in general and weigh it against a good criteria in the documents here to get a better basis as to what someone could qualify for by our ARPA review committee. We would also see that this would be marketed towards restaurants that either knew relocating to or expanding at properties within the city limits. And one limitation that we want to put on there is that one application per property for either a property owner or restaurant operator. We want to go ahead and try and make this as flexible as we can, but at the same time, make sure that it is not being all taken by one single person, for example. If we are able to get this program off the ground, we can start taking applications by the end of the year.
I'm going to go.
Do you have any kind of questions?
So, the application includes a section, number four guidelines. Funds may be used for renovation, fit-out of ineligible space, and for the purchase of furniture, fixtures, and equipment.
Correct.
So, does that mean that the furniture, equipment, and fixtures become the property of the applicant?
Whoever would be applying for it, yes.
The concern I've had is when we've done these things in the past, well, we don't do them anymore, thankfully, is that we've funded people to fit out the space, right? To put their stuff in it. And we got away from that, and we directed our first third, I don't know if that's the right term, toward like fixing up the bones of the places. You know what I mean? If a property isn't fitted out, the complaint, I'll give you an example. Complaint we hear from time to time is, "We want enough restaurants because there aren't enough first-floor spaces that are fitted out with restaurant-level exhaust, right? For kitchen construction." And in the past, in some instances, where we have, you know, bought the stuff that the applicant has put in, then the applicant, we have that, that's a loss. And it's just, it's just, it's just a plain loss, you know what I mean? Because then they take the tables and the chairs and the ovens and, you know, whatever the stuff is that goes in. Like, the fifty-thousand-dollar oven that we bought, you know, for the one, and the place next door that we outfitted, right? When I first came back to council and it said, "Hey, you know, I haven't been paying rent, and, you know, by the way, all the tables and chairs and everything that we bought, we bought to put in it, you know, we don't get." And so I just, I have a problem with the use, one, if it was ours, I'd have an issue. But I just, again, I don't think that ARPA was intended to stretch that far into this purpose. I'm completely fine if the one-to-one is say, "Hey, I'm going to put up my ten thousand bucks, and my ten thousand bucks is going to cover the furniture and the restaurant equipment and stuff like that that goes in, and the city's match is going to be to fix up the bones." You know, it's going to paint the place, it's going to fix the HVAC, it's going to, you know, make sure it's properly, you know, electrified and things like that because that stays with the building if the restaurant doesn't make it.
Right, and on a staff level, we're looking at that as trying to lower those barriers as much as we can for applicants. So if someone has to pay five thousand dollars for the furniture, if they had to pay everything else for the code upgrades in order to get a working hood system, then they could be reimbursed some of that fund so they can have those operating costs moving forward. And in the event that someone would unfortunately close, then those equipment that they did purchase could then be put towards another restaurant use. I will use the Public Square Cafe, for example, when the owners retired. One of our existing businesses that moved in just shortly after they did were actually able to purchase about eighty percent of their equipment so that they could actually come to market faster.
They could have purchased it, though, from us if we retain ownership of the equipment, right?
True, the city was to look into storing and maintaining those equipments.
I definitely don't think we should store and maintain the equipment.
I don't think that we should be buying those things for a private party either.
And we wouldn't be buying it ourselves either. That's all part of a applicant's matching, essentially.
That's what I'm saying.
So the other, the other restaurants that you're referring to, because I just wasn't on council at the time, was that a loan or was that a grant? Because I think it's two different things. A grant is a, here's a gift. A loan is something that's.
I think it ended up being both.
I think part was a loan, a part was a grant. And part of the loan is when we took the, the oven back that, you know, sat over in the market at the basement for twenty years. And then whoever learned how to put it together because it was in German. Plenty of German people around here who could help, but, but anyway, I, I like the fact that we're not restricting that part that Kristen wants to restrict, okay? I believe that if we're going to help, then we help. And, you know, if you're going to, you know, if it's a magic grant, then, you know, fifty-fifty. You know, if they're putting in eight thousand and then, you know, you're applying for eight thousand, I'm fine with that. And because, again, we're trying to help facilitate things to happen using ARPA funds that are not city taxpayer funds.
Correct.
So, yeah, I mean, if ARPA funds are sitting there that need to be used, which I'm sure there are, then let's create a program that does some good. And I'm fine with the way you have it put together.
So, Tiki, are you guys okay with this?
I have a couple of other.
I think that something that I would like to see is the, to add to the eligible applications is help with marketing and branding or something to that effect. Because that's something that would help. Furniture is great, but to help them and use the grant for that purpose would probably be beneficial. And another, a question that I have is, do you have a lot of people that are looking to relocate or expand or put a restaurant in downtown somewhere?
Downtown and other areas.
Or citywide.
Well, where, wherever.
So citywide in general, there are quite a few people who want to open a restaurant. And the number of barriers that exist in order to have them do so. And we do have our citywide redevelopment grant.
Right.
But the two-to-one match is off putting to some people due to that additional barrier.
Is this limited to, to restaurants? Any restaurant, right?
Not any restaurant. There's, there's like
Yeah.
So
Yeah.
So city center, for example, you definitely, sorry, citywide, for example, I'll just use that for that can be used for fit out costs and everything. Those lines would not include, of course, the equipment costs. When it comes to this, we try to make it as open as possible. So things like a coffee shop, a bakery, pizzeria, brewery, winery, anything like that that actually has a tasting room itself, that's a qualification that we would make for that. Has to have, has to have a commercial kitchen of some component that can be used for this. So kombucha bar, whatever you can kind of think of that would fall under this area. But a place that does not have that commercial kitchen component would be ineligible.
But any, but any type of restaurant, right? The kind of meats, right? They build a commercial kitchen. They seat people, they feed, you know what I mean? People buy food, they eat it there, right?
Right.
Or carry out.
Or carry out, yes.
So Chick-fil-A. Okay. I'm just, still can be chained, right?
McDonald's.
There's no restrictions like that currently, correct? Just like if, say, a Starbucks went and opened
Chick-fil-A's coming to us for money. I'm like, come on.
Listen, I, I mean, if I were McDonald's and you told me that I'm, there's no limit, right? There's no ceiling with this, right?
Right, there's, well
If I'm McDonald's and I'm coming in and you're telling me there's no ceiling for a one-to-one match, you can bet I'm coming to you for ARPA funds to do that.
But at the same time, we do have our upper review committee that's gonna be looking at each and every one of these applications and detailing that out. If there's someone that, for example, McDonald's versus a J's Diner, then we know that McDonald's has plenty more financial reason, financial possibilities that they can tap into. Then J's Diner might be when they're trying to either relocate or expand a second location.
Do you think there should be a cap?
I'm just curious, you're gonna, it, it sounds a bit like you're gonna unilaterally say no to chain restaurants.
I'm all for saying no to chain restaurants.
That's why I'm just
I think the, the spirit, I think the spirit of this is to help, you know, mom and pop.
Yeah, not, not chains.
I, I, I'm totally fine with that.
Thanks for adding that.
Unless it's a chain restaurant that I really like getting.
I guess, I guess one thing I would want, I would want to get clarification on
What is the max?
What clarifies
It's $10,000 the max.
There is no
There is no max.
Which I'm not a fan of either.
No, I don't think I'm a fan of not having, because someone could come in and say, hey, I'm gonna, you know, put a half a million dollar project down there.
Buy the absolute best oven that exists on the market.
I think there should be
They still did, it's a one-to-one match, though. So, I mean, that's, if it's the best oven in the market, I mean, they still have to have the means to be able to do it. I do agree, I'm not saying I don't agree with like a cap of some sort, though. I'm just saying, they're still, they still have some skin in the game.
So you want to make it $50,000?
I think there ought to be a cap with the ability to have an exception. You know what I mean? I mean, if someone comes in and says, listen, you know, I want to rehab this spot in downtown on, on West Washington Street. It's gonna cost me, you know, 80 grand, you know, 40 and 40. And it's, you know, it, it needs everything because that's what it is, okay? It's brand new. Then I'm fine with 40, all right? But if somebody comes in and says, yeah, I'm gonna put, you know, a half a million dollar thing on West Washington Street and I want to eat up all your $250,000, then that's a no.
Does it have to be a building that's already existing? Or can you do it in greenfield space?
We, there's nothing in this that specifically states
I'm, I'm just asking if you're, I mean, there's no cap on the amount.
Yet.
We're trying to get to a cap.
But there's no, but there's no cap on like, how many requests we get. There's, there's no
So do you want to make the cap 50?
The cap's 250.
There's nothing in this that specifically excludes, but it does specifically say the fit out of ineligible space. Renovation or fit out. So there's nothing that states specifically new builds are allowed either.
I, I think the spirit of what we all talked about was that it would be an existing space, not a new build.
Right.
For spaces that are sitting empty that could have another use.
Like out of Long Meadow and one of the empty shops out of Long Meadow.
Right.
That, that's what, how I envisioned this.
Right.
Not Right, that it's an existing building.
An existing building is this existing space, right? Not a new build.
I don't know, because I don't know what the total is.
Well, the total is this much. It's right there.
It'd be 250. So if you capped it at 50, you could have four projects.
Which I think is quite
What'd you do?
I was tested.
Thank God we have a shell.
I never was good at, I never was good at spelling.
Definitely south.
I mean, $50,000 is, that's a decent amount of projects.
Are you guys good with 50? That means it's a $100,000 project, max.
No chains, existing building, and adding the potential of marketing and branding. Because that's the toughest part, honestly.
You're, you're gonna have a committee that's gonna review all of this.
Correct.
I think 50's high because you only have five projects, all right? I think that you maybe lower that to 25 with the possibility of having 10. But to come in front of the committee and request more.
When you're out, you're out. Yeah. It could be however many, but when you're done, you're done. 250's it.
I mean, the, the same way that, you know, I mean, we we don't put a cap on Investagerson except that it's the amount of money that we have.
Why, why did we set the number at 250? Was that just the number we, we just came up with?
It's just the reallocation.
Is that something that is in?
House money that was being allocated.
Right.
Yeah, that was
Money that was freed up of them.
Right.
But, but there's, there's other money in ARPA. Did we just do it because of that? Or did we just say 250 because that's even a generate? I'm just curious. I mean, ARPA's bigger than the number of reallocation.
Right. We thought 250 was large enough to make an impact with everything, but not too much of an ask that would take away from other projects that mayor and council might want to pursue.
Especially when 32 North Potomac came in higher than what we, than what we expected it to come, the choosing ARPA money.
And, and if there's, you know, if we're running out of time with ARPA money, being able to spend it, you know, and there's, there's more projects that are coming in than we have allocated, I think says we can reallocate.
Yeah, I'm okay with 25.
Yeah, I was not excited with the July of, July of '24, right?
Right. That gives us enough time to go ahead and make sure that these projects are completed, inspections are done, receipts are submitted because of the ARPA.
So July '24 is the completion, not the, hey, we're gonna apply to you by then.
Correct.
Right.
All projects must be completed by then.
Because it's gotta be spent by 12/31/24.
So what's the application deadline? Did I miss that?
Roll, it'd just be rolling like any other Investagerson.
Till it's gone.
Yep.
Are we capping at 25?
I was good with 50.
I'm good with 50.
But I do think that we need an application deadline. I just do because like, I don't want to be stuck here, like, like, you know. Depending on somebody, come January, February of '24, and they're going, you know, we're getting there.
Then you got six months.
We're getting there, and then suddenly you're like, first you're milling, where you're sitting like $30,000. What am I gonna do with this last second I can spend?
Right. And if we get down to where someone, we can't provide additional extensions out to someone.
I think January 1, '24 is like, you know, because you're gonna get those applications
We're gonna be out of money by then, but if you want to add it, I mean
No, I'm saying, I think we will, but I'm saying like by January 1, '24, you don't take any more applications.
Right.
Because we gotta get that money spent. I mean, 12 months isn't gonna shrink real quick.
Well, and then if there is, if there is some money left over and it's, you know, we're getting into November of '23, we just come back and say, can we have another couple months? Keep it up, just in case.
With, with the way that contractors are backed up and material, like I just
Yeah.
Are you guys good? Any other questions?
Can just do one quick summary, just to make sure I got all the changes.
Good luck with that.
Cap the grant at $50,000 total, so that would be a maximum project of 100,000. New builds are ineligible. Deadline for applications of January 1, 2024.
No chains.
No chains. Ad marketing and branding as an eligible expense. I believe that's it. And then, sorry.
So I was the one that said no chains because I feel like this was for mom and pop. Now, now that we have a cap on it, right? And, and if you think about chains, like Jersey Mike's is a chain, right? But they're privately owned by, like, a young guy around here.
It's a franchise.
See, I'd be like, okay.
Yeah, but they're, but, you know, what if he wanted to come in and open a downtown? I don't consider that a change. You're using your personal resources. So now that we have a cap, I don't know if we, I just want to throw that out there. Maybe we should rethink that.
Well, I think that if it's not for greenfield or new building, I think that I'm good with that.
A chain, yeah. I'd like to send you on the list.
You'd be hard pressed to find a chain that's gonna want to do that.
No, I, I agree, but what if, what if they do? What if this without, okay, so take that out. Are you guys
She's gonna give her list of places she likes to go.
So, chains can be eligible again, of course, because of cap, correct? As long as it's not a new build.
Right.
Okay. Is there anything else?
It would be easy enough to see if it's a corporate, if it's, if it's a corporate going in or a franchise going in. It would be easy enough to tell in the application.
Okay. Is there anything else that I might be missing? Or any other questions, comments, concerns?
We're good.
All right.
As long as you've been up here.
I feel like it. One thing I do want to go ahead One thing I do want to go ahead and comment on is that we did put the July 1, 2024 deadline that all projects must be completed by, just in case there are anyone who might be not making their deadlines essentially to complete the project so that mayor and council has the opportunity to reallocate those funds to another project that they might need to. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Next, we have program, open space, annual program. Welcome.
Not, not to look away at that issue, but if I could just comment real quick on the last one. Because I was involved in moving all this kitchen equipment and storing all this kitchen.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. So the restaurant on the, on the South Potomac Street, we ended up moving truckloads of equipment to what used to be the Tusing Warehouse, which eventually landed at the Fairgrounds because we sold the building. And when we eventually sold it, five, six, seven years later, it was sold for pennies on the dollar. So you're spending a lot of labor, moving, storing, and then when you sell it, it's, it's, you know, the value is much, much less. So if there's any way we don't take back please, please do not. And then 3640, we took that, remember, there was a pizza place in there. And there was, and there was kitchen equipment there that was not gonna be used. And so we had to figure out how to get a pizza oven out of this property, which was a bit of a trick. And so, you know, this is not, you know, so I've been involved in this at least twice. And so if we can avoid that, I'd appreciate that.
I love this opinion. You're coming up here on the mic and
I'm good with it.
So anyway, so program open space, this time of year that we submit projects to the county for, for some, not just approval, but for their submittals. And so staff got together for a number of projects that we wanted to submit. This is your opportunity to say, yeah, we're good with this, and no, we're not, or add to the list or take off the list. But what we have in order of priority is, the first is the Hager House Museum, which is not the Hager House itself, but the house beside it, that house is a small museum. It's probably never been renovated. And so Rodney and his, and his, somebody that's completely redesigned it. We have a nice, you know, make it modern and so that we can display items from the Hager House and from that era. And so that's our first priority. The second priority would be the Intedum Creek Waterway Trail. And this is an access point on the creek, which is near Mount Antioch Road. It'd be on the north side, just before the dam. So if you came downstream, there'd be a clear area where you could remove your kayak or whatever. There'd also be a way to walk down past the dam and then put it back into water there. And so it's been pretty much designed. There's still design that has to be done so we can get our permits and such. But it's a pretty expensive project. And it's part of a much larger Intedum Creek Waterway Trail. And this is just one, one access point. And then the final thing we put on here was the Hagerstown Fieldhouse and putting money in there towards the possibly some basketball courts or something like that, since we're unsure of what the funding source will be. So that's the three we're gonna, we're looking at submitting. It's up to you to say if that's okay or no, or what you want to do here. How do we get, how do we get through the POS requirements for number three, given it'll be a privately I, I'll have to ask them and see, before I even submit it, I can make a phone call to DNR. Because that's where the funding comes through with the departmental resources. It'd be like the three schools with the county did, where the gymnasiums of those schools were filled with POS money, but then the county has to make them open and accessible. Which county's able to because, you know, their Board of Ed and County are sort of like a quasi same.
Right.
This, in this case, it's a private Staff had the same question. I apologize. I didn't have an answer for tonight. But I can certainly find out before we even submit it. And if it's, and if the Fieldhouse is not gonna be open to the public at some point where it's a free evening or whatever it is, it may not be eligible. Yeah. But it's a good point.
If it wouldn't qualify, is there any from the list that you would want to add as 3A or B?
Do you have a recommendation, Eric?
I mean, we have other ones in the, in the, because we tried to do a five-year plan as recommend, as recommended by the county. They like to see a long-term plan. I mean, we certainly, you know, asked for more money for the Hager House Museum, or, because we're gonna ask for it next year anyway, because it's, the 150 is not gonna cover it. This is probably what a 400, four, $450,000 project we're talking about.
That might make a sense.
But how much the county, you know, we usually get what, $200,000 or $300,000? So there, there's just no way all three projects are gonna fly. But we can certainly ask, or we could ask for more money for the museum or something like that.
Yeah, I think if, if you can't do the Fieldhouse, you might as well just put more in visitor center instead of asking two years in a row.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Your street closure request and event changes. You stay up here.
Oh, Eric, you're still here.
Hi, Amy. Hi, Joe.
Hi. Obviously, you know Joe, he's gonna discuss the changes he'd like to see for the annual bike race and seek approval for some new street closures.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. So what we're planning on doing is removing our event from the traditional Father's Day weekend that used to be in downtown. We're moving it to earlier in the racing season. Obviously, with the construction of the baseball field and Hood Street being removed from the typical course design, the actual course in downtown has different characteristics, so there's some logistical challenges with that. There's just more logistical challenges with putting on an event in downtown Hagerstown anyway. And with the Juneteenth holiday taking place, there's just more competing events because now I have a cycling event on a Saturday that's part of a three-day weekend. So therefore, you've got people who are leaving town, are they really gonna come back to race, so on and so forth? So logistically, there are some challenges with doing the race in June now. So we're moving to early May. I've checked the calendar for our entire cycling region and that date, May 6th, is free on the calendar. The course that we're looking at is a course that we've used back in the 80s and the 90s. We've consulted with Hagerstown Police Department because this course here, minimal impact on residents, minimal impact on logistics in terms of needing HPD or even volunteer traffic control for this particular cycling loop. However, what we also want to do is have a 5K foot race to start the day off. So this loop that we have here has been, has been seen by HPD. I want to say it's Lieutenant Brenner and Canode. Both, we actually went out on our bikes. rode the course, I rode the course, they drove the course, just putting that out there.
Holy cow.
So, um, but this was the course that they suggested, because the one course that I had was longer, uh, but this is a loop that we can do twice, being a more compressed area. Um, this is a loop that's actually now, as of yesterday, has been certified, so we've actually got the actual distance to make this, simply two laps around this yellow loop encompasses basically a three-point-one mile loop. The running loop starts on Prospect Avenue up near what's called Apple Alley, which is closer towards Pennsylvania Avenue, makes a loop down around the red section, back out through Forest Drive, so on and so forth, like you see here, and eventually ends back on Prospect Avenue near Plum Alley, as a matter of fact. So very compressed, easy to do. Eight o'clock start time for the running race, nine o'clock start time for the cycling event.
I'm fine with this, but my question is, why was it moved? Why did you move it downtown from the eighties and nineties?
So I came to downtown, I came down to, to city, to mayor and council, to promote a race in downtown. And, um, everybody was, yes, great idea, great idea, great idea, but there was no funding for it. And so then I think we had, uh, councilwoman, I wanna say her name is Haywood, am I right? So she had, had actually come to downtown Williamsport, seen a race that we didn't, done in Williamsport, because we were doing the tour of Washington County, um, and she had seen a stage of that event in Williamsport and asked, well, why aren't you doing it in Hagerstown? And I said, because you guys did not vote for it in Hagerstown. And so the following year, lo and behold, we had it. So, I mean, the events in downtown Hagerstown have always been very, very well-received, and they've been very colorful and so on and so forth. But what's happening now is that post-pandemic, earlier-season cycling events are drawing more crowds as opposed to later-season cycling events. And so then what happens, especially on this particular weekend, there's a national event in Wisconsin, which is American Dairyland. There is a national event on Father's Day in Harlem, the Harlem Skyscraper Criterion. There is a regional event on that Sunday in Pennsylvania, which is the Masters Pennsylvania Championships. And then there's the Juneteenth Celebration in downtown, as well as the Juneteenth Holiday, which is typically observed on that following Monday. So we've got competing events throughout the region, logistics in downtown, plus the holiday. So we're really, really pulling from the cycling community, as well as pulling upon the resources for the city, and you're just not getting the bang. It's like when you see the bodies in terms of what we need to pull off a race in downtown versus the bodies that are going into the restaurants, we're not getting that same pull as we did, say, ten or fifteen years ago.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a logistical reason, but it sounds like it wasn't.
How much do you use fire services for this? And I ask that because that weekend is the Bonanza Extravaganza. So there is not going to be extra bodies.
No, all we need, I mean, like, again, this is a very, very, very low-impact event. I mean, like, logistically, from a traffic control standpoint, we typically need one person on Prospect Avenue and Forest Drive, and we typically need one person typically up on Charles Street and Oak Hill, and maybe another person up on Charles Street near the alleys to direct traffic that's coming out of Park Place and the alleyway. That's typically.
Fire police.
Yeah.
But, but we're talking about, we're talking about, like, maybe two or three bodies the entire day.
All right. I just wanted to put that out there.
And that's really depending upon HPD who dictates who has to be where for traffic control.
Okay.
Well, my son will probably be doing this for the first time, and I would appreciate as many mattresses or cushions on any of these turns, so that, you know, mommy's baby doesn't get hurt.
We will either take care of him or we'll bandage him up while it's bringing him up.
Emily and I may run the five K.
He can't get any prettier, so.
Yep. There you go.
You can run the five K.
You're joining us.
You can run the five K as long as we are on record saying that it will be ran.
I'll do that.
Meaning running, not fast walk.
No, we ran it.
We, we ran.
We are running.
All right. You guys good with this?
Yes, I'm good.
Good, good, good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, request from Blackthorn Capital Partners.
Good afternoon. Way back in, uh, July of twenty twenty one, we actually talked about this issue in executive session. Since that time, Blackthorn has purchased what I call the bead building over fifty-one fifty-three West Washington Street, and they're actively renovating it. Um, I've heard that they're putting, uh, restaurant-type use on the first floor and market-rate housing on the, uh, upper floors. Great investment in our downtown. Um, when they, before they bought it, they talked to us about kind of massaging the property line between the parcel where the cultural trail is and their building, and they have formally requested that now, and they have prepared a plat, so that what they're asking is if the city could convey three hundred and fifty-one square feet of land so that they can complete their elevator and stair tower and also have outdoor dining. The, it doesn't impact any of the cultural trail or the utilities, where we do have utilities in that area, we're reserving easements. So in effect, uh, we're giving them title of land, but we're still having a right to use it for utilities. So we're recommending that we approve this conveyance.
The project's really cool. I saw the plans for it. It's, it's exciting. Are you guys good?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, automated speed enforcement contract. That's a favorite topic.
Good evening. So we are up for our renewal of the contract for speed enforcement cameras, uh, something a little changed this, this year. Uh, so since, since two thousand nineteen, we piggybacked with Calvert County, uh, on a contract to get lower pricing, in, in the contract, so in, since that time, uh, here recently, a company called Altamont, um, has bought out RECOR that has our contract. Uh, because of time constraints where we are right now, to be able to put this back out the bid and do all that before the contract expires, uh, uh, it's gonna be, it would be impossible to do. So what I'm requesting from the council is that we continue for one more year. Uh, Re, uh, Altamont is, uh, gonna maintain the same, uh, contract language and pricing for the next year, and then we can look at, looking at, bidding that out again if you choose next year. We could have a conversation and look at that for the following year. So nothing changes in terms of how the program runs or the, the cost, uh, for this, so that's what I'm here for today.
Does anyone have any questions? You good?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, proposed CDBG annual action plan amendments, RG Joe.
Hi. Evening. So I want to review, um, some of the recommended reallocation of Alms House funding. But, uh, while the Alms House project, uh, is not going to go on, and we will still need to move that money, it's already been granted to us by CDBG. Um, as staff, we met amongst ourselves and with other different departments, um, finance, engineering, to review some different projects that we thought would have, uh, the most impact, and that would also contribute to our timeliness standard by HUD. And so the, the projects that, uh, are on your memo are what we came up with.
I like increasing the emergency repair grant. I think that's a good call.
Yeah.
Go ahead and just, just walk through.
Okay, sure. So we have our current existing activity that's funded every year, the single-family emergency repair grant, uh, it's currently funded at forty thousand. We'd like to funnel another sixty thousand towards that for a total funded amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the accessibility ramps around town currently at one hundred twenty thousand, and we could definitely, push as much money at that as we possibly can, and that, that will definitely always be, a program that's, you know, just ongoing program. Uh, but we're looking for a total funded amount of one hundred seventy thousand. Uh, a reopened activity, there are just a couple small finishing items for the Hagerstown Skate Park. Rodney has asked for thirty thousand to finish those up. Uh, new project, uh, improvements to the triangle north of Park Circle, uh, looking to improve end and style sidewalks, um, lighting and foundations for proposed, like, different artworks, sculptures, that kind of thing, to improve the aesthetic of the area. And, uh, the last project, alleyway repaving, just, uh, resurfacing of deteriorating alleyways around town, just to make them safer and, and better accessibility.
You guys have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions.
You good with this proposed?
Yes.
And, uh, our second recommendation, uh, an increase in the funding maximum for each individual emergency repair grant case. Uh, it's currently at ten thousand, and we would like to increase that to fifteen thousand dollars. And that's the cap. Obviously, not all projects are gonna require that much funding, but we'd like to be able, just due to the increase, the continued increase in cost of everything, we'd like to be able to fully fund more projects.
Okay. Yep. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, review a lease for the Foundry Pop-Ups. Hi, Jonathan.
Foundry Pop-Ups is currently leasing fourteen hundred square feet at six North Potomac Street or Elizabeth Hager Center. That lease began January first of twenty twenty-two. Um, we also provided a temporary lease last year during the holiday season, uh, for, in exchange for leasehold improvements during the, uh, the lease in early of twenty-two, so January to March is when those improvements occurred. The current rent is at thirty thousand dollars a year, um, which included leasehold improvements in the space, and, uh, that thirty thousand dollars is paid by a project restore. The lease currently is an annual, uh, opt-in. Rent is set to adjust to twenty thousand, three hundred dollars annually, or fourteen dollars and fifty, fourteen, fourteen, fourteen dollars per square foot, uh, which is comparable to the CVB's, uh, previous rent at the space. Uh, the Foundry's requested rent relief, um, to opt-in for their, their next annual, uh, lease for fifty percent of rent for four months, or three thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents annually. The businesses indicated, uh, during, uh, this two unknown operating conditions from January to March, and slower than expected retail draw to the downtown part of the business. Uh, if you were, uh, looking to pursue this, we'd look at that fifty percent for four months, as well as, uh, an extension of the, uh, Section Seven, which is the right to expand into a new space during that initial, uh, term, so in, extending that for another twelve months.
So, shh, the Foundry has not paid rent yet themselves, out of their own checkbooks.
Correct. The state program has paid for all the rent so far.
And it is my understanding that they are expanding or opening another location or something along that line, and have received another round of project restore grant funding that does not apply to this particular store.
That's correct, yeah. They, they received another project restore grant that would be, uh, a different type of operation.
I mean, I have a, I have a tough time with all of that. The fact that the rent is, was covered for the first year, and there's now another space that's being opened, it's just me, just have a, it's tough for me to say yes to.
I think for me, it comes down to two things. Performance and demand. You know what I mean? So as, as we engage in entities that we wanna see, you know, bring downtown alive, you know what I mean, like, we want, we want that to occur in a manner that, that, you know, they can marketably do so, you know, of their own accord and firm footing, you know, as, 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 as we encourage them financially to add into that, and then the second is, I think maybe it's your point of, of what's the demand for this space, because I think I said in the prior conversation, if, if, you know, I'd rather see a space occupied for some minimal investment on our end than if it's just gonna be not occupied at all. But I'm not going to sit here and, and support a continuation of support of that occupancy if there's demand from another party, you know, that doesn't need that support.
And we have not marketed the space, it's hard for me to comment on that.
I mean, I think for that amount of money, it's worth keeping them here. I mean, it's a re, we say we need retail businesses all the time, and it's a retail business, and I think with the changes going on downtown, I mean, if that's gonna help keep them alive, I think it's worth three thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars.
And, and while that isn't, it, it's, you're right, three thousand, you know, thirty-three hundred dollars is not that much. But if you have been given grant money and you're opening another space, I think that it's hard for me to wrap my head around all of that. Do you know what I mean? And, and while I, I mean, I will go with the majority, of course, but, you know, I'm, I am not interested in extension after this.
We need to see the ship sail.
Right. I, I think that it's really difficult to own a business, and, you know, to, I think one needs to make sure that it's doing okay before. Yeah. But I'm, it, it's not that much to invest in, to keep someone here, to, but I am, I'm, those are my concerns. So yes, but.
So, yes, okay. Bob, are you, yes, Kristen? I'm gonna take that as a head nod to Keisha.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. I mean, I think I look at the money and go, okay, you know, is it three thousand bucks to, to help, you know, keep supporting something to, to, you know, that, 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 you know, may fly, or is, or is it, you know, somebody looks at it and goes, oh, whatever it is.
Thanks. City Administrator.
I have nothing this evening, Mayor, thank you. Thanks a lot.
Councilwoman Martina.
I have nothing. Jeez, Scott got nothing I have.
You know, uh, I didn't say this when, uh, Elise Farson-McBean was here earlier, and, and I should have. Uh, first, obviously, thanks for the tireless, uh, work that she has put in and committed, uh, to that, um, effort over a very long period of time. Uh, but I think, you know, on this side of the table, I think for me, it's pretty simple. There are things that, that we come in here and that we have to do, and there are things that we come in here and that we're supposed to do. And for me, that effort is one of those things I've always looked at as we're supposed to do, uh, because it is those things that are going to be important, uh, when we talk about, uh, the center and other things like that, where kids need to see that stuff, to see how important it is, to see that we think it's important, you know, for them to know that, you know, that, um, I don't know, it just, it just lifts, uh, the morale, I think, and so, um, I hope that we do get the chance to return, uh, that funding in some manner, uh, when this thing, uh, takes off.
Yeah.
I probably didn't say that well, but that's, that's about it.
I got the gist of it, which is more than I can usually say for when you're talking.
It wasn't zoning, so.
That's right.
All right, well, I just wanted to remind everyone, the Saturday is the third anniversary of Jay's Diner at ten AM, and they're having a shindig there, so come out, out and have breakfast and brunch. It is worth it. Also, just wanted to shout out, uh, the Hagerstown Fire Department for the absolutely beautiful job that they did yesterday at Zach's, uh, funeral. It was just well-executed. There was, I think, two hundred and five cars in the, uh, procession, and everything was taken care of. And so, you know, second loss in a couple of months here, they're all in my thoughts. And also, um, just saying a prayer and sending love and light to Lieutenant Josh McCully and his wife Christina for their loss of their daughter last week. It's, it's a rough time of year to have that happen, so just sending them all the love and appreciate all that they do for our community. So with that, everyone, we're turned. So with that, everyone, we're turned.
Hello and welcome to Council Wrap. I'm joined by Public Works Director Eric Dyke, a man who wears many, many hats, probably more than he's ever wanted to wear, especially over the last number of months or so. So let, let's start off with a little bit of an introduction and the things that you are responsible for, or at least your departments are responsible for.
Sure. Our, our department does handle a lot of different facilities and divisions, and so I'll just run down them pretty quick. We, we handle all the street issues, whether it's snow plowing or street trees, things like that. We do the traffic control in the city, which is the traffic signals and signs. We do building maintenance. We handle the fleet maintenance for the city, which the city has 450 vehicle, whatever it is. Fire, police, public, it doesn't matter. We, we maintain all those vehicles. We, we oversee the parking system downtown, and then about a year and a half ago, we took over Parks and Rec. So it's, it's quite a few things that we, we have under our umbrella.
So now, as you presented to Mayor and Council, you get to talk about program open space. Can, can you sort of give everyone a, a little bit of background on how that works? Where the money comes from? I understand that what was selected this evening or is presented by staff then from Mayor and Council to have the input on. That goes to Washington County. How does all of that play out?
The funding actually comes from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, and the program money is for programs or facilities that are outdoors.
Okay.
The idea is to promote open space.
Sure, yeah.
And so it can be used, there's a, there's a lot of things it can be used for. Typically, it's not for maintenance. It's usually for something new. And the city has used it for a whole variety of things, such as playground equipment. The skate park would be a good example, things like that. And so each county, then, the money is funneled through that county. So the county is the one that handles, in this case, Washington County, the applications, and they have a board in which you go present to them, and they say yay or nay if that makes sense. And then if, if they're agreeable to it, and they give their approval, then it goes back to the state, and then the state does their final approvals, and then they release the money. So it's a, it's kind of a long process. But we are very thankful for what we've been given over the years. We're very grateful for that money. It's helped with a lot of great programs and, and projects to the city.
Is, is there a typical or average amount of money that the city gets annually?
Now, I've only been involved, this is only my second time.
Yeah.
My understanding is it's about $200,000 to $300,000.
Okay.
Because obviously, the funds are limited. The county is also, every little other municipality in the city is also, or the county is looking also for money and funding, as is the county. And so they have to look at all that and decide, you know, where the money gets dippyed up and that sort of thing. But I think it's about $200,000 to $300,000.
And when you look at what you presented tonight and look at the information in the packet, there is a five-year plan.
Yes.
So it seems like this is something that is, is always being worked on, looking out into the future five years and then kind of working backwards to the priorities that would line up with this upcoming year. And first on there was the Jonathan Hager House Museum, and as you said, a facility that probably has never, ever been renovated in its existence.
No. My understanding is it hasn't. It was built and decades ago, I'm not sure what year exactly. And this isn't the Hager House itself.
Right.
Which is the residence of Jonathan Hager, which you can, you can tour.
Yep, with all of the artifacts and things. And, and
Correct.
My, my understanding is too, that they, they sort of, that, that they do a, I, I guess what you would call a shuffling of some of those artifacts in and out of the Hager House and into the museum and things like that. But for the most part, I think a lot of those things that are in the museum remain pretty much in the museum.
Correct. My understanding is there are boxes of stuff that has not seen the light of day for a long time. And so the museum is small. You know, we're not expanding the size. What we're trying to do is, we're, we want to renovate it so it's on a professional level.
Yeah.
Again, it's been decades since this thing has been, and they did a good job.
Mm-hmm.
But, but it's 2022, and it's time to, you know, and we wanna, you know, we know the Fine Arts Museum is, is looking to expand, and they're, you know, not only the room building, but in the area itself. And so it seems like the timing's right to be part of that whole project, to be part of that whole, I'll say museum and, and kind of visitor type thing that's coming over there. But, but again, it's not in the Hager House itself. It's in the house beside it.
Right.
And there's a museum in the bottom portion of that.
Yeah, so if, if someone has never been there, it's certainly worth checking out, especially when it comes to the history of Hagerstown. I mean, there are so many things. It's fascinating to look at some of those tools, some of those things that were used when you're talking, you know, 1800s.
Right.
You know, what, what 1700s? Yeah, we're going all the way back. So, yeah.
1762, according to.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. Yeah, I was thinking 18th century, but 1700s, yeah.
But yeah, the priorities are, the, the, Washington County asked us to put out a five-year plan. But, you know, nobody can see into the future. So you have these ideas, and then you have different councils come on board, and maybe their priorities change. You know, the Field House is something that, that really probably wasn't anybody's radar just a couple of years ago.
Right.
And now we're talking about trying to build something that's, that's gonna be a great thing for the community. And so whether the funding can apply to that or not, that's, need to be seen. So I'll have to do a little more research on that.
How about the, the second item that you presented, which has to do with the Antietam Creek Waterway Trail, which is part of a larger project as you sort of outlined.
Yeah.
And you got into some of the specifics of that, mainly for people to enable them to be able to walk down and then also to be able to, I guess, load in and out with their kayaks and, and whatever it might be that they're using there on the creek. And, and the key there is, is that the dam is in that particular area.
Yeah, in that case, it's the dam right there. I think, I, from what I've seen on the map, I think further north even, there's another smaller dam. And so this waterway trail is an idea to go as far as you can on the Antietam Creek.
Okay.
And so there's some areas that are, that the water may be too low, and so you still have to come out. And so the idea is to have a number of access points along the whole waterway trail so that you don't drive, you know, 10 miles north, and then you have to go 20 miles south, right? And so maybe you only want to kayak a portion of it or something like that. And so this, this portage would be on the north side of the Antietam Street, or the, and, Mount, not the road, I'm sorry, Mount, at Antietam Creek. And so the portage would be there, but the, which is right before the dam, which used to be at the old City Light Plant.
Yep.
And so there's also a walkway where you would actually walk under the bridge and then kind of, um, because it's a, because it's a dam, you gotta go down to a steep embankment, kind of a cross back and forth, right?
Right.
To get down to the, the water, and then you put your, your boat back in there and then keep on going down. So we'd be, we'd have like parking for three or four cars and maybe a picnic table and things like that. Just something that'd make it easier to get in and out of the water and clearly show that this is where you want to get in and out to make it easier for, for kayakers and such.
How far, do, do you know how far along they are on this project at this point? Because there was money that came in in 2020 from POS, I believe about $45,000 at that point.
Yep, yep. The, we've designed it in-house. It's pretty much designed.
Okay.
But because it's on a waterway, there's a lot of very specific permits, and there's a lot of government red tape that we have to jump through, not just for us, but
Sure.
but for the state. Because anytime you do anything along a waterway or a public, or a stream like this, there's a lot of things to be considered. And so we'd have to hire an outside engineering firm to do a lot of other calculations and other research to make sure that we, that we can meet all the, you know, checks and balances that are, that check all the boxes. And therefore, but it's gonna be a pretty expensive project to do that. Those, those things, I think the design outside is 15 or 20,000 dollars alone. To have them take what we've done and then tweak it to make sure it meets all those, all those, check the boxes types, that sort of stuff.
Right, yeah. The, the implementation lots of times is, is that added cost, for sure. And that's why this, this funding is, is so important for projects like this. Let, let's shift gears a little bit to this time of the year for you. Talked about all of the, the hats that you wear. So what, what's at the forefront of your mind here as we head toward the winter season?
Yeah. Well, we might be throwing some salt down here in a couple of days. There's something coming Thursday, but obviously, you know, we're starting, we're already gearing up for winter weather. You know, whether it's freezing rain or snow and that sort of thing. And December usually is a lighter month in this area. January and February is the harder hit months. City usually experiences, or this area, about 10, 10 to 12 storms a year. It depends. So yeah, we're geared up for that. Our trucks are ready. We have salt already and all that sort of thing. So we just keep an eye on that. Me personally, it's budgets. The city has to build a new budget, so I'm spending a lot of time crunching numbers and that sort of thing.
Yeah. When, when it comes to the, the, the streets and preparedness and then clearing snow and ice and, and things of that nature, I, I know I've gotten calls in, in, in the few years that I've been here from the media about what, what do you do in advance? Can you explain to the larger audience that there is not a whole lot necessarily that can be done within the city?
Well, what we do in advance is you make sure that your trucks are ready. You have to, you know, mount salt spreaders and plows and that sort of thing. And you go over to the trucks and make sure they're, they're ready to go. So when you jump in it, you're not, you know, even as simple as making sure it has fuel in it, right? So the guys are, right? You make sure you have a salt supply, and you have a salt supplier, which we do, which has actually been out through the county. That's another joint effort between the county and the city. And so you have all those things ready. We have a contractor. We have one contractor that helps with the, because the city geographically is expanding, we needed assistance as we got larger and larger. And so we have a contractor that signed up for that. So all those, those are all the prep things you do in front of it, your trucks, your salt supplies, your contractor, that sort of thing. Then when the storms hit, then we're looking at hitting our primary streets, you know, Franklin, Washington, Potomac, you know, the, the main, the main streets. You know, Basil, Garland Grove Boulevard, things like that. Then you hit your secondaries, which are interior streets and, and developments and things like that.
But, but the topography within the city is such that you're not out there putting brine on the streets in advance?
No, we've looked at that in the past, and, and I know the state does it. But our elevation is pretty much the same throughout. And so the brine comes with other costs and other preparations, and I just haven't, so far, all the research I've seen just doesn't really show that it would be that advantageous for us. If we did do something like that, we would probably contract it out because you have to, it's a whole nother, it's a whole nother infrastructure you have to put in place to make that happen, not only at your facility, but on your trucks itself.
Okay.
And so it gets, it can be costly. But with our elevation, you know, it's not like we're doing the gap up towards Hancock or, right? We, we don't have that here.
That's right.
So as far as, as long as Hagerstown doesn't expand that far, I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, we, we don't have Hagerstown Mountain, so
No.
we're not dealing with that.
No.
Uh, we'll just wrap up on, on this note with, with the holidays ahead. Certainly, the 100-miler is coming up.
Yes.
As far as Hagerstown Parks and Recreation is concerned.
Yep.
And right now, City Park is, is illuminated.
It's beautiful.
If you want, you want to hit on a couple of those things?
Sure, the 100-miler, yep, it's coming up. I think the registration's in early January. Your staff's been working hard on that. I encourage everybody to sign up for that. It's part of a broader program throughout the county over, I forget, I'm sorry, I'm a little sketchy on details, but, you know, it has to do with a little bit of weight loss and the county trying to lose X amount of pounds.
That's right.
And so, so my staff, Amy, who was here tonight, was, was in charge of that. City Park, staff did a fantastic job putting that all together again. It's beautiful over there. We usually get, we have a traffic counter, I think, like 20,000 people will go through the park. And it's, and it's, yeah, it's, it's beautiful. The staff did a fantastic job. So it looks great.
It is, and it evolves every year, and this one may be the best yet. And I don't say that just in terms of promoting it, but I think that is the case.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and thank you for your time, carving out a little in your schedule to sit down here after the meeting. I certainly appreciate that. Appreciate all of you watching, and for now, that's a wrap. We'll see you next time on Council Wrap.